This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, C-311.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you all for being here. I am Senator Angela Williams Graves, Representative 21st Senate District, and the Chair of the Brown v. Board of Education Scholarship Committee. We are going to get started by calling the meeting to order, and we are going to go through our roll call for attendance.
Senator Hashmi?
Here.
Lieutenant Governor-elect Senator Hashmi. Senator Williams Graves?
Here.
Delegate Mundon King?
Here.
Delegate Runyon?
Here.
Delegate Glass?
Here.
Delegate Teta? Dr. Barbara Enman? Dr. Janita Kearney? Cameron Patterson?
Here.
Joan Johns-Cobs? Paris Turner? Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you so much, and before we get started with the meeting, I do want to acknowledge on behalf of the committee and give a big shout out of congratulations to Senator Lieutenant Governor-elect Ghazala Hashmi. I know she's excited and relieved all at the same time. So, let's get started. We had talked about in a previous meeting. This volume is really high. Can I do anything with it? It's just an echo. Okay, I've just got an echo. We talked about in our previous meeting putting together what might have been a field trip over to the Moton School, but that was just not possible this year. But we've got the school, and they came to us. And so, we're going to get a little bit of history this year in a virtual presentation from a representative of the Robert Rusha Moton Museum. And we can take it away.
Ms. Brown, if you can unmute and go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Leah Brown from the Moton Museum in Farmville, Virginia. So, what I'm going to do is just do a basic of our history here along with... Next year, we're celebrating our 75th anniversary of the walkout along with the 25th anniversary of the museum itself. So, lots to look forward to in the upcoming year.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Before you begin, are you going to share your screen or do you need me to pull up?
I'm going to try.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you see that? This is notorious for... All right, can you guys see the Moton School story PDF? Would you rather I just say it?
Yes, we can. You can go ahead.
So, Moton School story is George L. Courage. Its name were permanent galleries. In this space, we talk about how individuals, K-12, how children were impacted by the tortures of grownups, along with how citizenship, citizen's action, how people claimed it and then walked out for it along with the support staff that was here in Farmville and Prince Edward County. Let's see if the tech works. All right, I cannot see. Did my slide change? First question.
Give us one second if you don't mind.
Yeah. Take your time.
While y'all are doing the technology, given that information that was just shared with us, I think it would be appropriate for a commending resolution for the 75th anniversary of the walkout and the 25th of the museum. A joint resolution from the House and Senate to honor those two events. Those are very historic, and they're historic years. So, I think we can work on that as well. Is that something that we would start or is that something that you all could help us? And I'm referencing staff right now. Could y'all help us with that?
I could with a deal attorney to try and drive something for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
If you just let me know when to advance the slides, I will do it from here.
Perfect. That sounds great. You can change the slide for me. Thank you. So, this is the Moton Museum as it is today. Open in 2001 as a museum. So, here's the museum's backstory. This building wasn't used with Prince Edward County as a school until early 1990s. After 1993, the question was, what do you do with this structure? Do you keep it? Do you tear it down? What's the strategy? What's the plan? A local group of women, the Martha Forrester Council, along with other community members, decided to buy it. The building was purchased for $300,000. And from there, the idea was how to be best, share, and save this information. The museum's early start in 1998 was named a National Historic Landmark. So, getting that national designation and national status and that support, so they moved forward to open in 2001 as a museum. Now, when you come visit today, in 2020, in 2013, we added the new permanent galleries, even though a virtual, like, 360 tour of the space as well, but still original structure, original floors. So, you're seeing what typical Moton High School students saw every single day. We have converted some of the classrooms into gallery spaces. So, you wind through their story while learning about them. So, again, power of place over and over and over again when it comes to this building, to this structure. Next slide, please. This is a photo of the original Moton. Now, this is the second Moton High School in Farmville in Prince Edward County. How it worked out, the first Moton is across the street from me now, the Mary Branch School, built in the late 20s. So, with that, you have a St. Louis High School for Black students in the town of Farmville that housed grades 1 through 11. Very quickly, it was overcrowded. And imagine the classroom spaces. The lower levels were in the lower part of the school, second floor of the high school levels. Lot of children, a lot of movement. So, of course, the community was thrilled when this Moton was built. Now, with this Moton High School built in 1939, it was built for only 180 students. Quickly, it was overcrowded. But before we go into the logistics of what life was like at Moton High School, I want to talk about the Council of Color Women in 1920. They came about, Martha Forrester is one of the original members. She and her friends, the trio, got Black women here in Farmville and Prince Edward County to come together to plan an act to help support the children that are here. So, we think about Black Club Women. We think about Black Agency, Black Citizen Action. Black women have always been vital to supporting their own children in the wider community. Mutuality is how we've survived so far. But with this connection and dedication to education, it's showing the commitment to preserving and protecting and investment in the students that were here. So, keep it in mind because the Council of Color Women changed into the Martha Forrester Council. So, our story starts and continues on with the school and the museum with the same group of women. Okay. You can advance the slide for me. Thank you. Okay. Because Moton was a little too small, it was quickly overcrowded. The structure here is tar paper shack. When you think about this tar paper structure, we have a mock-up of one in the museum. And you can, if you don't know what tar paper feels like, it feels like thicker black construction paper. That and plywood are all these structures are made out of. Not sturdy, not safe. They also have no insulation, temperature outside is temperature inside. We know yesterday was miserably cold. So, I could imagine having a classroom in this condition where you're trying to learn content along with not freezing. They did have potbelly stoves, but it didn't work as actual heating element. It was more of an issue concern about being a fire hazard. So, typical life Moton High School. We had the brick Moton building, built too small. Where in the auditorium, there were classes like gym, maybe math, maybe history, all in the same space along with classes in these tar paper classrooms. And when that wasn't enough, maybe classes on buses as well. Making the best of the best situation. You can advance the slide for me. So, cue Barbara Johns. Now, this is a quote we use for Barbara Johns all the time because it really sums up her motivation and her why. She said, "There wasn't any fear. I just thought, this is your moment, seize it." Now, my understanding is when Barbara was little, she was basically like third mom to her siblings, one sister, how is she known? Along with three brothers. So, the straw that broke the camel's back was she was getting ready for school. She left her lunch behind. She misses the bus. She sees the bus from Farmville High go by her, and she thought, this is ridiculous. They could just drop me off. Because Moton High School was on the edge of town. But two blocks away was Farmville High School, the high school for white high school students in the town of Farmville. Not to mention, there's another white high school, Worsom, as well. So, you're seeing just how the well-known lack of care and concern, also just the frustration of they could just drop me off because now I'm late for school. So, in October of 1950, Barbara Johns comes up with a strategy to kind of help her classmates figure out what to do. What could these students do to support themselves? Next slide, please. But we have to use comparisons. We know in our timeline, Jim Crow era, per the law, everything is separated by skin color. But the separation is also supposed to be equal. You're seeing Moton High School on the left, Farmville High on the right. Now, for our timeline, Farmville High was built in 1938. It's four times the size of Moton, built in 1939. If the law was being followed to a T, these buildings would be absolutely the same. So, you're seeing the difference in investment, also a debt of tax dollars as well. Now, the Council of Color Women also helped support the Moton High School by raising $1,000 to help furnish it. So, they're paying their taxes. They're also raising additional monies to furnish the classroom spaces. Next slide, please. The football fields. Y'all know how important football is to our high schoolers. The mountain field on the left, you're seeing a wood fence around it. There are some goalposts, but definitely doesn't look like a football field versus Farmville High's photo. I like to use this one as well because it shows just the vastness of that particular building. Next slide, please. And our last comparisons, the one I think that sums it up the best are the auditoriums, a space for just the arts in Farmville High. You see a balcony, you see like the nice stage, and the chairs that are bolted to the floor. They do not move. They don't have to move. Versus Moton High School's auditoriums, definitely the folding chairs. We still use them today. Moveable because it's a multi-use space. It's for choir, it's for art, it's for band. It's also for math and history, like I said before. So, knowing that there's a dedicated space in Farmville High School one two blocks away, Moton has to be adaptable consistently. You're seeing the disparities in education and access and how it's funded. Next slide, please. Very clearly, students in Moton High School, they wanted a new school. They were okay being separate along with what they had was equal, which goes into that plus the Ferguson Corrigan case, the separate eagle, which I've already spoken about. So, really clearly, you're seeing what students wanted, what they were invested in, and how the strategy came about. Now, can you go back to the former slide for me, please? Perfect. Thank you. I want you to put your focus on the Moton High School. That's the auditorium. That is the stage where on April 23rd, 1951, Barbara Johns, along with Carrie Stokes and John Stokes, shook up the entire school. That morning, teachers received notes, signed BJ, that's going to be a school assembly. And I thought, great, Principal Boyd Jones has called us down for assembly run, see what the principal's going to talk about. Said it was Barbara Johns on that stage. Bit of a shock for teachers and students. My understanding was Barbara was quiet, but as Ms. Jones shared before, she was a little bossy. So, thinking about her coordination and getting all the students involved and invested. Now, in October 1950, the strategy was to get the popular kids to kind of help support and rally the troops in a way to get everyone involved in the school walkout. Because it's a bit of a shock. When I think about when I was young, again, the phrase, no one came to see you, children are seen and not heard. But in this case, in 1951, you're seeing students over 400 make a huge splash, and their voices heard by just walking. Now, as the story goes, that Principal Boyd Jones had received a crank phone call off school grounds because he'd agreed with business owners for any of his kids, his students, to be in trouble, to call him first, think one chain of command, but also protection for the students at Moton High School and the wider community. He's off school grounds. It's just the teachers and the students and the school. Teachers were asked to leave. They, of course, said no, but the football team politely, but forcefully gets them out of the building, out of the way. So, the teachers wouldn't be held accountable for the student-led, student act, student-led, student plan, student act of civil disobedience, regular insurancy laws. But it was just the citizens in there, in the auditorium, Barbara Johns, all right, we got to walk out and be consistent, content together. And they did to change everything about this community here because it was a bit of a shakeup. Now, I've always wondered how parents responded that day. Bit of a spectrum. Some parents responded the way you think they would respond. You've lost your mind. You'll be back tomorrow. This is the wrong strategy. You're not going to do this. Others said, okay, let's wait and see what happens. Georgia Bear speaks, grandparents, one of the student strikers. She's one of my favorite, they're my favorite example. Her grandmother was a teacher. Living was understatement. How dare you disrespect me? I appreciate you better than that. Absolutely not. But her grandfather said, okay, well, let's see what happens. He had been told by the school board to not come back to meetings. It's going to fit in frustration. He said, you know what? Since you can't build a school for our children, then you're going to just go to school with yours. So, in that one household, you see the whole spectrum of responses. Because the question is, what's the best way to be a full citizen? What's the best way to get what you're already legally supposed to have? Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So, from that walkout, Barbara Johns asks Reverend Al Francis Griffin what they should do next. He tells her to reach out to Oliver Hill and WACP lawyer base out of Richmond. Now, the lawyers do come visit in Farmville, call it the massive meeting at First Baptist Church, Reverend Griffin's church. And from there, the Black community decides to sue the county. But there's some stipulations. The first thing is parents have to agree to support the court case. Think time, money, and risk. What could happen if you sue the county? The second stipulation was they had to sue for integration, which was the game changer. Separate was normal. Separate but equal is what these students really walked out for. But with this WACP strategy, it shifted from separateness to integration. This David Court case, Davis v. Prince Edward County Court case is brought into the bigger Brown v. Board court cases. You can advance the slide for me, please. So, with these five cases from Virginia, DC, Delaware, South Carolina, and Kansas, you're seeing how the whole country... The question is, how are citizens being impacted by this segregation, by this separateness or the constitutionality of segregation? May 17th, 1954, Chief Justice Earl Warren said, "In the field of public education, the doctrine of separate equal has no place. You got to get rid of it." Yay. But the same day, Virginia Senator Harry Bird was like, oh, no, we're now facing a crisis of the first magnitude. You can advance the slide for me, please. Thank you. With this phrase of massive resistance, or as I tell the fourth graders, big no. It really shows different legal strategies putting to place to resist this Brown v. Board decision. Next slide, please. As you see, Harry Bird's on the left. On the right is the new Art of Moton High School, built in 1953 to offset Brown v. Board. But quite obviously, it's called property, no trespassing. The school is closed. Prince Edward County had a vote within the white community in 1955 because what was their strategy? What was their plan to offset Brown v. Board? Now, we know in '54, Brown 1 tended down. But in '55, Brown 2 says schools must be segregated with all deliberate speed. There was about a week later, at Drum Hall on its campus, there was a vote to just close the schools altogether. Now, with that in place, the schools did say open until May, until June of 1959, with the algorithms, which Prince Edward County was told, you've had years to figure out how to segregate. Just do it. So, of course, the response to that was put that vote into action and then close the public schools. Next slide for me, please. So, with that, the schools closed in 1959 until 1964. But in 1963, there's protests. Protests are happening downtown. There's also buses from Prince Edward County going to Lamont and Washington. They're obviously, there's citizen action and saying, we don't, we're not getting our needs met, our rights being broken. Help support us. I like to use this particular photo because money talks don't buy till you hear that I cry freedom, that financial power to vote with your dollars. Next slide, please. This is a photo taken in 1963 as well. Something called the Free School was created. Not a public school, not a private school, but a free school. It did allow an education opportunity for students here because we, well, and after the schools were closed, Prince Edward Academy was created as a white student-only option for us, education here. And how it worked out in its white private school, the first two years, money was given or taken to pay for that. But once that tuition money was gone, corporate families couldn't afford to go to school. So, when you think about this timeline, you think about educational access and who was impacted and who wasn't. But with the free school, it gave some kind of structure for these kids that had been locked out for this one for four years. Next slide, please. This is Reverend Griffin. He's throughout these Moton walls, started helping Barbara Johns. First Baptist Church came like, became the teenage hangout where people would come together, they were strategists, and just spend time being together, a safe place for these kids as well. And in '63, a lot of the protests were based out of First Baptist Church. Now, he's important for a couple of different reasons. But part of the story as well, as we come to a close with the Moton School story, is the Griffin v. Prince Edward Court case, which was decided in 1964. And at this point, the Supreme Court tells Prince Edward County to open up their public schools. Next slide, please. Okay. So, with that, the public schools are reopened. Prince Edward Academy still exists for the white students here that could afford it. But everything had changed and shifted by then. Five years is a long time. People had left, never came back. Some families had been split. Some people also found their spouses because they left. So, there's a spectrum of reality checks and responses because of those closed public schools. But fundamentally, the school closing changed Prince Edward County altogether. The easy example I use to explain it is when I think about shopping and recreation, Farmville used to be a destination. Now, I'll ask my students, I'll ask groups, when you need to shop, where do you go? Typically, I'll go to Richmond or North Carolina. So, those economic dollars are now leaving Prince Edward County. So, that being said, are there any questions or comments about this presentation or about Moton in general?
I think we're good. It was a great presentation. Thank you so much. Yeah, but we have a question. Okay. Great presentation, very informative, and given us a lot of historical context. So, thank you so much for being with us and for providing the information.
Perfect. You guys have a welcome. Have a great day.
Thank you. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Really enjoyed the presentation. I think it's very important as we navigate our work. I think it'd be really neat for future meetings if we could have spotlights from Norfolk and the other communities impacted by the school closings, just to give that full perspective.
I like that idea. Thank you. Any other comments or suggestions? All right. All right. So, let's move on to item number four, the application cycle. And there are some policy amendments that have been provided to you. There's also a document that is online and that is from Ken Woodley, who originated this program and who is not able to be here with us today because he's traveling with his own children. What did I do? Okay, I'm too close. Okay. And so, anyway, he, when we were last here, yeah, when we were here last, and I think that time and the time before that, our constant comment, or at least a consistent comment, was we weren't here when all this started. And so, because we weren't here when all this started, we had no idea of what the context was in the beginning. And so, in talking to him and listening to him, I think that it's important that, to understand that initially, there was a wider context of eligibility that for whatever reason, perhaps maybe it was a limited funds at the time, or it may have been just, sometimes we make compromises to get things done so we can at least get something on the books and get something moving and not let perfect, what is it? Perfect be the enemy of... I don't even know. What is it? Perfect be the enemy of good? Progress. Yeah, that part. And so, anyway, he's provided an outline, and I'll give everyone a few minutes just to review it. But it does provide some significant context in where this was, what the intent was and what the coverage intents were, and a little bit about... Okay. So what I'm going to do is deviate just a little bit from the printed agenda in that we do have members of the public that are here who I'm going to figure they are here to comment on the agenda and the changing of the rules. So what I'd like to do is hear the members of the public to speak on the matter. And just remind folks, we gave grace to some of our public speakers last time we were here, who didn't, we did not enforce the speaking through the chair rule. And it was, it was grace because I kind of felt like that young lady needed to be heard, and I felt like she needed to be heard in her own words. But in order to maintain the decorum of the Senate and of the committee, I am going to ask all of the speakers to speak through the chair, which means you will address your comments and directives and questions to me. And then if anyone wants to respond or have comment, we'll make sure that we just keep that Senate General Assembly decorum on there. But, so if there are members of the public who would like to provide public comment, give us your thoughts, opinions, requests. Now is your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Marcia Walker. I am, I have spoken to the committee before because my father, John Smith, was directly affected by the school closing in Prince Edward County. And the slideshow that was just presented, one of the schools I actually attended was the one that's there, which is the museum, which I went there in the seventh grade. But because of the school closings and the scholarship that I have been asking for, my daughter actually attends a college, a four-year institution, which is Alabama State University. And she was denied the scholarship because she was out of state. And I addressed the board to ask to take into consideration, to explore the options of giving these students a chance. Because just this semester of loan, we've exhausted like a lot of student loans. That's, and my daughter's in her sophomore year. And she was trying, I told her, "That's not, that's not your baby because you should not have to worry about how you're going to pay for school." And she has been blessed with scholarships. She's an honor student. She's on the dean's list. And she's a criminal justice major with a minor in forensic science. And, but this scholarship would greatly have helped her this year and not have allowed her to be going into debt to apply for student loans when there was monies here that could have helped her. And it will also be, take a great weight off of my father as well because it just does his heart good to see something that he was not able to do. Now he can see it in his granddaughter, that she is going to school and obtaining something that he was not allowed. And just back in May, Longwood University, they handed out what they call honorary doctorate degrees. My father had never had on a cap and gown. So we actually went out and got a cap and gown for him and delivered their degree to him. And it was just something awesome and amazing, something that we take for granted, that we was actually able to do, that he was not afforded that opportunity. So I do ask that as you all make the decision to take into that consideration, to just, just not narrow it down to one specific, to think outside the box and how it genuinely impacts other people and their families. Thank you.
Anyone else, member of the public, would like to speak? Speak now, forever hold your peace. All right. So what we're going to do at this time is we're going to go into closed session. I'm going to ask the representative from Sched to stay, and just in case you have any questions. And in order to discuss where we are with the options that we have, and then we will come back. Do I need to vote for that? Michael, okay. So I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into closed session and ask the representative from Sched to stay with us.
Thank you. Michael's going to give us a roll call.
Senator O.
Aye.
Senator Williams, three.
Aye.
Senator Martin, king.
Aye.
Senator Runyon.
Aye.
Senator Glass.
Aye.
Senator Taylor.
Aye.
Senator Barbara English.
Aye.
Senator Janita Turner.
Aye.
Senator Page.
Aye.
Senator John Scott.
Aye.
Senator Turner. Senator Nine, no zero.
All right, we'll go into closed, and we'll be back shortly.
This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia.
Senate Committee Room, C-311. Did you know live Senate video is now available at youtube.com slash at Senate of Virginia? This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, C-311. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, C-311. Did you know live Senate video is now available at youtube.com slash at Senate of Virginia? This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, C-311. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, C-311. Did you know live Senate video is now available at youtube.com slash at Senate of Virginia? This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, C 311. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, C 311. Did you know live Senate video is now available at youtube.com slash at Senate of Virginia? This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, C 311. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, C 311. Did you know live Senate video is now available at youtube.com slash at Senate of Virginia? This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, C 311. This is the Senate of Virginia, Richmond, Virginia. Senate Committee Room, C 311.
Okay, here we go, better, better, better. In coming out of executive closed session, we do require legislative action in order to in order to move forward with any changes to this particular piece of legislation and how these funds are awarded. The committee itself is a representation of the General Assembly. It is a representation of the greater community at large. But we in and of ourselves are not able to vote to change the legislation or change the rules as they are written. So the recommendation for as we come out of this session is one that in the line of direct descendants, direct being children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, direct lines to those who are directly impacted, that they be domiciled in Virginia and that they be awarded, we keep the $10,000 award for in-state tuition and the five and for out-of-state tuition, that will be $5,000 per year. The reason for that is we don't know how many people we have. And we know we have money and we know that we have federal funds that have their stipulation based on when we received it. And then we will have money ideally coming out of this upcoming budget as well to continue to fund this. But we just don't know what those numbers are actually going to look like. And I believe that it was a consensus of everybody that we wanted to do something in order to try or in order to work to make this right as best we could. or in order to work to make this right as best we could. So the way that this will work is we will come back in December. We will meet with DLS, which is our Division of Legislative Services. They will draft the legislation. We will vote on accepting the legislation. Then that will go into the 2026 session and that will be voted on in the 2026 session. It will go into law July 1st of 2026. So it will make eligibility under the new criteria for 2027. And so because we can't in and of ourselves make those changes. But that is to move in the right direction. We want to see how many applicants we actually receive and what our actual funding does look like and how we can move forward to best make this right. And did I summarize that about, right, of how? Okay, very good. So I believe we need a vote, a motion to accept the recommendations of direct, directly impacted and direct lineage domiciled in Virginia, in-state tuition for those stays at $10,000 and then out-of-state tuition goes to $5,000. And I need a motion.
So moved, second.
It has been moved and properly second. Is that a voice vote or you are good, go ahead and call the room? You can, okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, very good, very good, very good, very good. Thank you so much. I appreciate y'alls work on this. Alright, so the next one is just advertising that we are recommending a budget of up to $10,000 in advertising digitally and in newspapers where appropriate. And that will be, I'm going to renew my request again that when this advertising go out, please send that to the legislators and the members of this committee so that we can get it out to our constituents who may not know about the program. And we have something tangible to give them, to share with them, to get a link to them so that they can, folks can apply. So I need a motion that we recommend authorizing up to $10,000 for advertising in the Virginia Press Services, advertising digitally and in newspapers as appropriate.
So moved, second.
It has been moved and properly second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, great. Okay, so Michael, when do we schedule for next month? December 3rd. Alright, so we'll be back on December 3rd at 1:00 p.m. in this room to vote on the final language that will go to the General Assembly come January of 2026 at 1 o'clock.
There's a J-COS meeting right at 1. Am I the only one on J-COS?
Yeah.
I am not.
I'm on J-COS.
Hashman, Lieutenant, yes?
I don't think I'll be it either.
Okay, alright, okay. I'm going to beg and plead and ask very kindly if you are able to be here for that meeting that you are here. We can't vote on any of this work that we just deliberated on if we don't have a quorum. And so, yes. It is the very last.
Madam Chair, I have a conflict.
You have a conflict at that day or at that time?
At that time for sure. I could, I mean, it's a two-hour drive, but if we do something early.
We can adjust the time because we haven't posted it yet.
I'll commit to adjusting.
Could you do it before, I could do it before or after?
Okay, so if you do it early, I've got a 10 o'clock, I've got a 10 o'clock. We'll be in this room too? Okay, 10, 11, so 12.
After, later would be better for me.
Okay.
Well, I just have a, I have something back in Virginia Beach.
Yeah. Back home earlier, yeah.
So we need three, I'm hearing that we are missing, we're going to be missing three people. I just need, I need one more, right? If we're, is that correct? If, based on what we have now, I just need one person. Okay, so how about this? We go 12 o'clock. Will 12 o'clock work for you?
12 o'clock would work for me.
Okay, 12 o'clock works for you. 12 o'clock on December 3rd? We can do that? Alright, if we can do that, I think that will get us our quorum. And, yeah. We will hope and we will pray and we will, that we can keep our, that we can keep our quorum because we can't vote on legislation without it. Alright, so our next meeting will be at 12 noon on December 3rd. Here in this room, we'll vote on the final pieces of legislation. I want to reiterate my great thanks and appreciation to all of you for serving on this commission and for all of your input and heartfelt input as well as we deliberated through all of the matters. Thank you to the members of the public who have come and brought this, not just an issue, but a real-life circumstance to help us to put names and faces and situations to circumstances. It's very, very helpful. So thank you so much for being here. And I wish you all a very, very happy Thanksgiving. And we will see you on December 3rd. We are, oh, do I need a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We're adjourned.